Wait for Mr. Haas. Okay, can I ask everybody stand with their flag, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, limited to God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
Moment of silence, please. Thank you. Call, please.
Mr. Bilbo?
Here.
Mr. Us?
Here.
Ms. Howke?
Here.
Mr. Kelleher?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Present.
Mr. Snee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vogt?
Here.
Ms. Wakus?
Present.
Mr. McInley?
Present.
Thank you. First, we're going to do a recognition of the casual, C.A.S.U.A.L., which is the colon cancer. Ms. Saunders? Okay. She is the, are you the president? Yes. Of the group. This is something we annually do. And I'd like to read the proclamation. Whereas colon and rectal cancers are one of the most frequently diagnosed cancers in northeast Pennsylvania, whereas incidence and mortality rates in some areas are much as 10% higher than U.S. average, whereas about 75% of the new cases of colon and rectal cancer incur patients of average risk, whereas approximately 520 new cases are diagnosed and about 200 patients die from colon cancer each year in the counties of Lackawanna, Luzerne, Monroe, Pike, Susquehanna, Wayne, and Wyoming. Whereas the Northeast Regional Cancer Institute has been easing the burden of cancer in northeastern Pennsylvania for over 25 years to community and patient services, hospital and practice support services, and cancer surveillance programs specifically designed to meet the unique needs of our region. Whereas on Thursday, March 28th, the Northeast Regional Cancer Institute will sponsor the 16th Annual Casual, which is Colon Cancer Awareness Saves Unlimited Adult Lives Day to increase colon cancer awareness throughout northeastern Pennsylvania. And whereas Casual Day was established by the family of Helen Phillips, who fought a courageous battle against colon cancer and died in the summer of 2002. Now therefore, we, the Luzerne County Council, do hereby urge residents of Luzerne County and all of northeastern Pennsylvania to be screened for early detection of colon cancer and participate in support of the Northeast Regional Cancer Institute in its colon cancer awareness efforts and designate the month of March as Colon Cancer Awareness Month and March 28th as Casual Day in Luzerne County. I would like to ask Ms. Saunders to come up. Accept that? Please. If you would like to make some comments, may you support it? Please.
Let me publicly thank you for recognizing this. This is the fifth year since I've been president of this organization. And for anyone unfamiliar with the Northeast Regional Cancer Institute, we have offices here in Wilkes-Barre and in Scranton. We've been in existence for 27 years, and we are an information and referral resource in this community and throughout seven counties, actually, of northeast Pennsylvania. Helen Phillips was diagnosed with late-stage colon cancer. She had never had a colonoscopy. Her family came to our organization and said, "What if? If she had had a colonoscopy when she turned 50, she might be here to see her grandchildren." So we tell this story every single year, marches nationally, Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month, and we just remind people that 90% of colon cancer is, can be avoided by screening. So our message is that, please get screened. And it's a long acronym, Colo-Cancer Awareness Saves Unlimited Adult Lives, but it is a dress-down event. It brings awareness to this important issue, and I thank you for recognizing it.
Thank you. We also have three retirements from the county in the past month. Mr. Angelo Grasso, who served with the area agency on aging, Janet Hall, who was our director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and Nicholas Veat, who was the lead worker with Buildings and Grounds. And we'll send a letter out to them congratulating them on their retirement and thanking them for the service of Luzerne County. Moving down to additions and deletions from the voting session agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions from anyone in council? We have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Ms. Wakus?
Sir.
Mr. Snee? On the question? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. We do have, excuse me, before we get to the public comment, Attorney Craig, do you want to speak to the personnel section, please?
Yes. Just so the public is aware, an executive session of council was held prior to the start of this evening's voting session. Personnel matters were discussed, and that was the only topic of discussion in that executive session.
Okay. Thank you. Again, we'll get the public comment. I understand there's several comments in regards to the zoning issues on the agenda for this evening, so we'll take that first, and we'll go through and have the speakers who have indicated that come to the podium one at a time, okay? Ms. Oliveri? What community, Ms. Oliveri, do you live in?
Pardon me?
What community? What municipality?
Huntington Township.
Huntington Township. Thank you. The podium is yours.
Okay. Well, I live near the site where they want to propose to put a Dollar General in. I just want to tell you, my house is in view of where it's going to come. I've lived in the Huntington Mills area for 40 years. It's a quiet community. There's only a few scattered homes. There's a fire company. There's a couple little businesses. And my concern is, all the homes in the area, I spoke to a realtor, we're all going to lose value on our homes, every one of us. And we have a lot of nice homes up there. Okay? Next, they're going to put a driveway coming down Route 239 in this area. It goes from 35 miles an hour, 45 to 35 within 100 feet. They're putting a driveway in. I clocked that road. I've never seen, myself, I wouldn't know what 35 miles an hour. That's dangerous. That's a question. At night in this community, it's dark. You go out in your backyard, you sit down, you don't see nothing. They put a Dollar General over there, you know what we're going to see at night? We're going to see lights, and we're going to see cars. Then we're going to have noise. All these cars. I live on a dirt road behind a fire where they're going to propose this, a semi-dirt road. Do you know how much extra traffic that's going to put? And the dirt coming onto our homes? That's a concern, too. And the noise from the parking lot, and the people, and the undesirables down there. I mean, I don't think it's, there's so many other sites in the area, they could put this, why would they want to put this right out in the middle of a beautiful residential area and stick it there? It's because of the fire company, which is not very cooperative to the community. There's only two other zone commercial businesses in the area, and they're both on Route 239. One is a three-bay car wash, little tiny thing, little lights at night goes out. There's another general store down there, down the road, it's been there 50 years. You can go and buy anything you want, soup to nuts. That's the only two businesses. Then we have a proposed one coming up the road at a place that is already zoned that, and it's going to be possibly a mini-mark gas station. Now, it's going to take away business from these people that's had that for 50 years. And it just doesn't seem to be fair to the area. And like I said, for the last, and I'm just going to say something about this fire company. I've worked and I've helped them for 20 years, haven't lately, and it's gotten to the point where nobody wants to do nothing, so now we want to sell something, we want to make money. So, fine. Nine years ago, they started blowing a nuclear siren that was meant for the power plant. Every time the fire siren went off, they let it blow. If it's just an accident, it blows one time real loud, and then it does 90 seconds. Then if it's another, and then it goes off again and again. So now, Dollar General wants to come in and buy a piece of property. Guess what we did? We stopped blowing the damn siren. We don't blow it at all no more. And then they found out about wanting to do this six months ago. They never let the public know. Why didn't they get all of us together and say, "You know, come on, there is a Dollar General eight miles away in Benton, there's a Family Dollar five miles down the road in Chickshinney." So, and then we offered, me, a few others, offered to buy that land. We'll buy it from the fire company, or put it up for residential, let a home go in there. Well, why a Dollar General? They'll be open until 10 o'clock at night. I mean, I don't think it's fair in this community and this setting. There's so many sites down the road where there's no houses, and there's open land, and there's, for sale signs, but yet they want to do it here. And the fire company is just so damn sneaky about it. Why didn't you get all of us together? Get all those people together, and, you know?
Okay, Ms. Oliveri?
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
That's my opinion.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Straub?
Hello, my name is Kent Edward Straub. I live at 37 Fire Hall Road, Chickshinney, Pennsylvania. Please forgive my appearance, I'm coming from work today.
Well, that's fine. I'm glad you made the time to come.
Thank you. I'd like to start by saying that I have a great deal of respect for volunteer firefighters. I have firefighters in my family. I appreciate their dedication and hard work. I've made multiple attempts to engage in conversation focused on a solution that would benefit both the fire hall and the small community. I even offered to buy an acre of land that parallels my own, on the condition that this area of land remains zoned residential and free of any future construction. Nobody at the fire hall called me back, never, not one time. My neighbors and I have been concerned about this issue since plans were announced almost a year ago. We've attended township borough meetings, a town hall meeting, two different rezoning hearings. Our questions never get answered, our concerns are always ignored. When we met last in December, I read a statement in opposition of this proposed rezoning, and for the first time throughout this entire process, our thoughts and feelings were heard loud and clear. And I wanted to thank all of you for giving us that opportunity and for giving this matter the careful, thoughtful consideration that it truly deserves. Thank you all. All of our concerns still remain. There's environmental concerns that I previously noted. We have financial and investment concerns associated with our homes and land. There's issues that will directly affect our health, well-being, and peace of mind. Dollar General has still not provided any research, study, or statistic to prove that Huntington Mills wants or needs this store. There are approximately 15,000 Dollar General stores in the United States. There are opening stores at a rapid rate, 1,300 new locations last year. That's more than three new stores every single day. This chain now has more outlets across the country than McDonald's has restaurants. It moves into places even where Walmart will not go, often targeting rural towns, damaged inner-city neighborhoods where they're less likely to find opposition to the store's construction. Pennsylvania already has 700 stores. We already have more than 20 here in Luzerne County. There are already four stores, Dollar General, within 10 miles of the proposed construction site, one in Benton, one in Sweet Valley, and two in Burwick. I want to ask you, when is enough enough? The construction of this store will be disruptive, and it's going to be a permanent change to our way of life. It will set precedent for future opportunities for the fire hall to sell off parcels of this land for the purpose of business commercial construction. And I have to tell you, this is not a business district. This land is surrounded by farms, forest, a recreational area, and most importantly, it's home to my neighbors and I. We've all stand united and together in opposition of rezoning of this land. I humbly ask for your vote in opposition of the proposed rezoning and construction of this Dollar General. Now, with your permission, I also have two statements from neighbors who were unable to attend this meeting. May I have permission?
Your time, I think, is pretty much up, but if you give us those statements, we'll have them circulated, because we have two more people who are going to comment.
Unfortunately, I have them saved in my email, but I can tell you, they're very similar statements.
I would think so. Obviously, they're your neighbors, and I think what you expressed was that everybody pretty much has the same thoughts about that. Correct?
Okay. Thank you for your time and concern.
Thank you. Mr. Schuckers, is that correct? George?
Good evening, everyone. My name is George Schuckers. I live in Huntington Mills, in Luzerne County, and my address is P.O. Box 4, 1022 Route 239, Huntington Mills, PA 18622. And I addressed this before in the other meetings, and that's the concern about environmental, which is there are going to be a settlement pond. I couldn't get any information because it's not in a process where they don't know what they're doing, going to do yet about this. Okay, you're going to have contamination that's going to run off the blacktop and run down over the hill into settlement pond, and then where'd it go from there? As I noted in the other meetings, I stood up and spoke, and that was, they're doing drill holes, five feet deep. The same day, my neighbor, which is right across the street, and I live right down the road from them, about, oh, about 200 yards, our water turned brown. Because underneath there's water that runs constantly down over the hill, down through the property, into the ground, and then it feeds our wells. So I did what I had to do. I asked my neighbor about it, and I told them about it, and they said, "Well..." In other words, I can't prove anything that it was brown, because I didn't tell them it was brown until I went to the meeting. But I did have it tested. Thought my water is good. Afterwards, I had it tested, so therefore, if they go up there and work, we'll just have to go from there and see what happens. But it is a concern, because if the settlement pond isn't done right, and I know you have zoning and laws and all that, because I've dealt with this before, is it going to be laid to where it's going to have a laymate in there? Is it going to seep down in the ground and dispose itself? Is there going to be an overflow? Because it's up here, and everything runs downhill into the village, and our wells are down there. And that's one of my main concerns. And the other one is the traffic. But of course, you have the state that's going to give you their output on that. So that's the two main concerns I have, but I'm not going to talk about what they talked about, because we all feel the same way. But that's my concern about the contamination, and about what about our wells and other neighbors, too.
How deep you up?
121 feet. I think Tom said his is 160, I think.
Thank you.
So I have to say, you have any more, you have any questions for me, or?
Not right now.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your time. Marion? Is it Hidlake? How would you pronounce your last name, Marion? Hidlake? Okay.
I'm Marion Hidley. I live in Huntington Mills, and my statement is in opposition to the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance from an S1 to a B3 in order for Dollar General to buy the parcel and construct a retail store. Our current neighborhood is quiet and peaceful. The construction of a Dollar General store will impact my quality of life as well as the adjoining neighbors. This business will increase traffic, noise, and lighting. Dollar General representatives stated that parking lot lights will remain on for one hour after closing, which will be either 10:00 or 11:00 p.m. However, the security lights will remain on all night. These lights will face our homes. I have lived in my house for 46 years and enjoy the peacefulness of the country, not security lights shining in our home. Besides the normal environmental concerns that come with the construction and operation of a business, my worry is the stormwater retention pond. This standing water will be a haven for mosquitoes and other insects. We are grateful to the volunteers of the Huntington Fire Company and are aware of their financial situation. However, to sell a parcel of residential land to big business will surely affect our quiet neighborhood. If this parcel gets rezoned to business, what would stop the fire company from selling more acres to business in the future? I am for progress in the area, and I am aware of the financial gain for the fire company and the tax revenue for the township and county, but our neighborhood concerns outweigh the benefits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, please?
Yes.
Does anybody know how many acres of land the fire company has?
I believe it's eight.
Thank you.
They have eight total, or eight they want to sell?
No, they want to sell off approximately two acres from what I anticipate for the Dollar General.
Can I ask you a question?
The whole area, the whole field of the residential section is, I believe, seven to eight acres.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question as well, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
The public might build answer, or maybe even Mr. Eddy, but, you know, this is designated, it's a suburban designation. Does anybody know when that took place? Because I'm guessing it took place in order to construct the volunteer fire hall there, I'm guessing. Does anybody know what it was prior to that, or when the fire hall was originally built there? That would help me out. If anybody knows, if they could speak.
The building's 50 years old, given them by another contractor, I'm not sure if it was one of them, I don't know his name. They bought it off them after they put the fire hall.
So, and I'm wondering, because I'm not a planning expert, but I'm wondering if the designation was changed there to accommodate the fire hall in the first place, because that, you know, then we're, it would just change my decision, I think it would drive the discussion, too. If anybody could speak to that.
They bought the land for the fire hall. I'm not sure if it was donated, or bought or sold out of it. That's all I know, and I've been thinking. I want to make sure.
Because if I can, Mr. Chair, Mr. Straub came here last time, and we looked at, there were maps, and I don't see in my agenda packet tonight, but all the adjacent areas surrounding that are agricultural lands, they're agricultural designations, so we see this...
I think Mr. Eddy could probably respond to that. Mr. Eddy?
Is Mr. Eddy even here? I don't know if he is here or not. Oh, Mr. Eddy, thank you.
As we discussed, what was it, December?
December.
A while ago. Yeah. A large portion of the area to the north and east, I think, is agriculture. There are some areas, very few areas that are S1. There are a couple properties to the south that are B3. And most of that area up there is listed as agricultural, although a lot of them are essentially low-density residential in character rather than open fields. But there are open fields up there, just...
Okay. That's helpful, no, because again, I'm just saying, if the designation was changed to accommodate the fire hall, and now we're going to, in turn, industrialize the area because originally landlord thought it was a kind gesture to help out the volunteer fire company, and now the neighbors are going to be paying for what seems to me perhaps a kind gesture.
Oh, we'll save that discussion to when we get to that point.
That's fine, but thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And Mr. Eddy's here, so if we have other questions, he'll be available. Mr. Hagan? Anybody ask for a voting session?
Good afternoon, or good evening. Actually, I guess there was a little miscommunication that occurred. We thought our matter was going to be on the agenda tonight, so really, I'm here informally to ask to be put on next, the next agenda.
Okay, that'll be the second Tuesday in March?
That'd be fine with us.
And then you'll be on the work session?
That's fine.
Which follows our voting meeting, so you can expect, you know, 6:30, 7 o'clock?
6:30, 7 o'clock on March?
I don't have the calendar in front of me, but it's the second Tuesday.
March 12.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else would like to speak from the audience at this time? Those are the ones that have indicated to us prior to us coming in for the voting session? Yes?
Just one quick comment. Although recreational is listed as a zone, zoning, there is a recreational area right behind this proposed construction.
You said that, I think, earlier, right?
There are tennis courts there.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay? Yes, sir? Sure. We need your name and where you reside, sir, please.
My name is James Thomas.
James Thomas?
And I reside at 31 Fire Hall Road.
In Huntington?
Township.
Township. Okay.
I have some concerns because, first of all, they proposed this, and they border my property where my barn is, that's part of my farm and my property. It would have been nice... Can I ask a question? Is there anybody from the fire hall here? Not one person? One person? That water that Mr. Schuckers is referring to comes off of partially my hill, and it runs constantly to spring. And it runs across the dirt road down from my property through drainage, and it runs right into this field where they're putting it. And I have a question as to where they're putting the retention pond. I don't want that near my property. So I don't know where they're going to put it. And it is going to decrease the value of my property, especially the barn. What if I wanted to put a pig farm there?
I think you're asking the wrong group about something like that.
Who is here? Can I ask another question? Who is here for Dollar General? Just you and him, right?
No, Mr. Eddy is a member of the county.
I'd really prefer that you didn't put it there. There's lots of other places. I have property I'll sell you.
Mr. Thomas?
But you don't have to put it there. It's already commercial.
Tom, Mr. Thomas, excuse me. Your time is to address the council, please. I mean, the gentleman from Dollar General who...
That water is a big concern.
Okay.
So is the traffic. I'm proposing to put a store in just up the road, and they made me through, go through so many hoops to get the site distance. Where he's trying to, where these people are trying to put that, I don't understand how it's going to be easy to do that. That's a question I have. What about the traffic? It is fast through there. There's not real good site distance there. And it would be, it's also going to interfere with traffic in and out of my place, definitely. It's too much in one congested little area there. So please take that into consideration. That water is a huge issue.
Thank you. Anyone else before we move on? Okay, thank you. Moving to the agenda items. Motion to approve the minutes from the February 19th meeting, please. Mr. Kelleher, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Perry? On the question? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? You in opposition? Mr. Urban?
No.
Yes. Mr. Bilbo? Abstention? Since you're a member?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Moving down to items on the county council. Motion to introduce the ordinance, submitting the Luzerne County zoning map to rezone seven tenths of an acre of property on Union Township from a construction district, C1 zone, to a highway business district, B3 zone. And this would be the introduction of the ordinance, and then we'll follow up with the public hearing, and we'd have to come back to revote on that ordinance. Do we have a motion to introduce the ordinance? Ms. Howke? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second? Mr. Kelleher? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bilbo?
I'm going to abstain.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howke?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes. I am 1-1. Thank you. Moving on to motion number two. Motion to adopt an ordinance, submitting the Luzerne County zoning map to rezone a 2.153 acre parcel property in Huntington Township from suburban residence district, which suburban residence district, which is an S1 zone, the highway business district, which is B3. Do we have a motion? Ms. Sedman, do we have a second? I'll second it so that we have a vote on it.
On the question.
On the question, Mr. Schnee.
I have to commend the speakers for being, addressing your concerns politely here. I'm in total agreement with their concerns. They've stated they've been on those properties 40 and 50 years. I think those people outweigh big business. I'm voting no.
Well, we're going to get to the vote, but on to question. Any other comments or any other questions? Mr. Eddy is available, so if we have...
Yes, I just want to make sure that some of the people who came here, the only income, as I understand it, the fire company would get from this transaction would be the purchase of the land. Is that correct? And other people of your group, some of you have offered to buy the land. Okay, thank you. That's all I want to know. Mr. Urban?
Yeah, I voted no initially, not to introduce this, because if it wasn't introduced, we wouldn't have to take a vote, and this thing would just die on its own. But I'm going to stick up with the people here in the audience today. I mean, their livelihood and their peace of, and quietness out there in that pretty country setting is far outweighs anything Dollar General has to offer. I mean, there are stores in the area, and I'm familiar with that. I drive out to Benton quite a bit, and I'm familiar with your community and your neighborhood, and it is a quiet and peaceful place, and it needs to remain that way for you people, so.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, sorry. Go ahead. One, Ms. Sedman, Ms. Wakus?
I just, maybe it was naivete on my part. I mean, I will also vote with the people, but I felt that this deserved a vote, and that's why I moved for it, rather than just not taking any vote at all. So, you should know that.
Yeah, Ms. Wakus?
Yes, I know the, I understand the gentleman is, I understand the gentleman is here from Dollar General, and it's great that you showed up, but I would urge you to talk to the residents, and perhaps you can find property somewhere else. That they seem to be willing to offer some suggestions to you, and I think if that could happen, that would be marvelous, because you all have a very bad reputation, it seems to me. And I think you need to do some rehabilitation of your reputation, and perhaps it could start here in the hallway after the vote. That's just my suggestion.
Anyone else?
If I could?
Yes, Mr. Haas.
Yeah, you know, we have property rights here in America, and it seems like this followed the appropriate path for development for Dollar General. Regardless of feelings about Dollar General, I'm not anti-Dollar General, but at the same time, when you look at the process, if really the fire hall, as far as I can see it, if they're just selling this property to get money, and the residents have come forth and offered the same dollar amount, then why is this transaction even going through? It just seems like it shouldn't have had to come to this level for council to deal with. It seems like it should have been done on a much more local level, at the table with a conversation. And I just think just because it's possible doesn't necessarily make it right to allow council to vote for this. And I too will be voting against it and support the maintenance task.
Anyone else? Well, we're going to have a roll call vote, but as Ms. Sedman indicated, I think it is time to vote so that we have a decision, and then whatever people want to do from that result, we'll move forward with. So, we will have a roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Houck?
No.
Mr. Kelleher?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Ms. Wakus?
The neighbors don't want it, so I vote no.
Mr. Bilbo?
I will abstain.
Mr. McInley?
I'll vote no also, and making unanimous. Thank you. Motion fails. Moving down to number three. We have a series of nominations and appointments hopefully for several different boards and missions. Mr. Kelleher, would you like to comment in that regard beforehand?
Yes, the first position to be filled was Luzerne County Board of Elections. I think it's wonderful to report that five people from the Democrat Party came to the meeting, and I think Attorney Sedman and Bobby Schnee would have all agreed that they were all wonderfully qualified. I asked them, I said, would any of you consider being on another A, B, or C, because obviously we're only able to appoint one, so four of you will not get appointed. So, I was going to get more information. I forgot to talk to this lady. Did any of them respond, or did you get anybody?
I have one no, two yeses, and two that I could not reach.
So there's two of them. One of the gentlemen at the meeting said, a tall man, Mr. John Charneski, said, I would be glad to serve on another board if I'm not appointed. So we have a lot of good talent. It's unfortunate we have to, we can only use one of them.
Okay. Mr. Schnee?
What Mr. Kelleher said, the one individual, this is how much talented in Luzerne County, has three engineering majors.
Wow.
So, I...
Well, it's great that people...
That just goes to show you what kind of people we have.
It's great that people will step up and offer their service.
Amen.
So do we, do open nominations? Do we have a motion to open nominations? So moved.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sedman. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Nominations are now open. We'll go down the list. Mr. Kelleher, Board of Elections and Registration, do we have a nomination?
I'll present the name of James Wills.
Mr. Wills?
I'll second that.
So that is Mr. Schnee and Ms. Wakus, correct? Do we have other nominees? Do we have other nominees? Yes, Ms. Houck?
I nominate Diane Dreyer.
Ms. Dreyer?
I'll second that.
That's Ms. Houck and Mr. Urban, correct?
Correct.
Any other nominations? The motion to close nomination.
Motion to close.
Ms. Sedman?
Second.
And Mr. Kelleher, all in favor of closing nominations, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions none heard? Motion carries. We'll have a roll call. Indicate the person that you're going to support. We have two nominees, Mr. Wills and Ms. Dreyer. Roll call, please.
Ms. Houck?
Dreyer.
Mr. Kelleher?
I'd like to almost nominate both and have them serve on alternate meetings. They're both wonderful people. I'll go with Wills.
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Wills.
Ms. Sedman?
Dreyer.
Mr. Schnee?
Wills.
Mr. Urban?
I miss Dreyer.
Mr. Vog?
Wills.
Ms. Wakus?
Mr. Wills.
Mr. Bilbo?
I will abstain.
Mr. Haas?
Mr. Wills.
Mr. McInley?
Mr. Wills.
Three for Dreyer, seven for Wills.
Seven for Mr. Wills and seven for Ms. Dreyer. Do we have a motion now to...
Three for Dreyer.
Three, yes, correct.
Three for Dreyer.
Do we have a motion now to appoint Mr. Wills by...
So moved.
Mr. Urban?
Second.
Ms. Sedman? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Abstain.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Ten.
Okay. Moving down to B. Do we have a motion to open nominations for the Convention and Visitors Bureau? So moved, Mr. Chair. Mr. Kelleher and Ms. Sedman, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions none heard? We now have, nominations are now open for the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and we have two positions that are available for this.
I do want to make one comment.
Yes, Mr. Kelleher.
One of the people was on the board, and it's a reapportment. He had one of those terms where they were adjusting terms. Just so we know that, that's Mr. Borwick.
Okay. Do we have a nomination?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Justin Pekarowski.
I'll second that.
Ms. Wakus, Mr. Kelleher? Other nominations?
Nominate Bob Borwick.
Mr. Urban, Ms. Sedman, second?
I'll second.
Ms. Sedman had before it. Any other nominations?
Move Ms. Kaminsky.
Mr. Haas, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Urban? Since we have all three people nominated, I don't think it's necessary to continue with nominations. Okay, we're going to have a roll call vote. Indicate which of the candidates you're supporting, Mr. Borick, Ms. Kaminsky, or Mr. Pekarowski.
Would we nominate, vote for two or one?
Two.
You can vote for two, because there's two positions, correct?
Three.
So indicate the two candidates that you're supporting, okay? Roll call.
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Borick and Mr. Pekarowski.
Ms. Sedman?
Mr. Borwick and Mr. Pekarowski.
Mr. Schnee?
Mr. Borwick and Mr. Pekarowski.
Mr. Urban?
I'm Mr. Borick and Ms. Kaminsky.
And who?
Kaminsky.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Vog?
Mr. Borick and Mr. Pekarowski.
Ms. Wakus?
Mr. Borwick and Mr. Pekarowski.
Mr. Bilbo?
I will abstain.
Mr. Haas?
Mr. Borwick, Ms. Kaminsky?
Ms. Houck?
Borwick, Kaminsky.
Mr. Kelleher?
Borwick and Pekarowski.
Mr. McInley?
Mr. Borick and Mr. Pekarowski.
We have ten for Mr. Borwick, seven for Mr. Pekarowski, and three for Ms. Kaminsky.
Okay, ten, seven, and three?
Correct.
So the two candidates who would have the support necessary to be appointed, Mr. Borick and Mr. Pekarowski, correct?
Correct.
So I need a motion to appoint Mr. Borick. So moved.
Second.
Kelleher, second. Mr. Urban?
Yep.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Abstain.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Ten with one abstention.
Okay, then we need a motion to appoint Mr. Pekarowski?
So moved.
Ms. Wakus?
Second.
Mr. Urban? Roll call.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Abstain.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Ten with one abstention.
Okay, very good. Moving down to the Planning Commission. Do we, any motion to open nominations?
So moved.
Mr. Row?
Second.
Second, Mr. Schnee, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition, abstentions none heard? Nominations are now open.
Nominate William Kane?
Mr. Vog?
Second.
Mr. Schnee? Second.
Motion to close nominations?
Mr. Vog, motion to close nominations?
Second.
Second, Mr. Schnee, all in favor of closing nominations, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
So we need a motion to appoint Mr. Kane to the Luzerne County Planning Commission.
So moved.
Mr. Urban this time, and Mr. Ms. Sedman, please. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Very good. Moving down to Luzerne County Recreational Facilities Advisory Board. A motion to open nominations.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Schnee, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, abstentions none heard? Nominations are now open. There are three seats there, but Mr. Kane has been appointed to the Planning Commission prior to getting to the recreational facilities, so he is not eligible at this point, okay? So we need nominations, please.
Ms. Kaminsky.
Ms. Kaminsky?
Second.
Second, Mr. Vog?
Mr. Zarnicki?
Second.
Mr. Haas and Mr. Urban?
Motion to close nominations?
Motion to close, Mr. Row?
Second.
Mr. Schnee? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, abstentions none heard? So now we need a motion to appoint Mr. Zarnicki to the Luzerne County Recreational Facility Advisory Board.
Second.
Mr. Urban and Ms. Sedman?
Mr. Kelleher.
Mr. Kelleher, sorry.
As an aside, we just, we were informed by Mr. Zarnicki that the fastest-growing sport in the United States for seniors is pickleball. I didn't know that, and he's apparently pretty good at it.
Okay.
Well, that influences my vote, Mr. Kelleher. I can't hope I can vote now.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Zarnicki. Roll call, please.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Need a motion to appoint Ms. Kaminsky to the Luzerne County Recreational Facilities Board. Ms. Sedman?
Second.
Second?
Yep.
Mr. Urban? Any roll call vote, please?
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
The motion to appoint Ms. Kaminski to the Luzerne County Recreational Facilities Board, Ms. Segman?
Second.
Second?
Yep.
Mr. Urban? Can you roll call vote, please?
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Abstain.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Very good. Moving down to Luzerne County Recreational Facilities Advisory Board, a motion to open nominations.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Schnee, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any abstentions, none heard, nominations are now open. There are three seats there, but Mr. Kane has been appointed to the Planning Commission prior to getting to the recreational facilities, so he is not eligible at this point, okay? So, we need nominations, please.
Ms. Kaminski.
Ms. Kaminski?
Second.
Second, that, Mr. Vogt?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Zarnicki?
Second.
Mr. Haas and Mr. Urban?
Motion to close nominations?
Motion to close, Mr. Vogt, second. Mr. Schnee? Yep, Mr. Urban.
Yes.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard, so now we need a motion to appoint Mr. Zarnicki to the Luzerne County Recreational Facility Advisory Board.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Urban and Ms. Segman?
Uh, Mr. Kelleher.
Mr. Kelleher, sorry.
And Mr. Urban?
As an aside, we just, we were informed by Mr. Zarnicki that the fastest-growing sport in the United States for seniors is pickleball. I didn't know that, and he's apparently pretty good at it.
Really?
Okay.
That influences my vote, Mr. Kelleher. I can't look like a vote now.
Is it real? Yes, yeah.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Zarnicki, roll call, please.
Mr. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
The motion to appoint Ms. Kaminski to the Luzerne County Recreational Facilities Board, Ms. Segman?
Second.
Second?
Yep.
Mr. Urban? Can you roll call vote, please?
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
No, it's unanimous.
No, it's unanimous, okay. Very good. Moving down to the Area Agency on Aging, again, we have, Ms. Kaminski's just been appointed prior to getting to this point, so she will not be on the eligibility list. We have a motion to open nominations for the Aging Board.
Move.
Ms. Howe, do you have a second?
Second.
Who was the second?
I think Mr. Urban.
Mr. Urban.
He might as well keep his streak going tonight.
Not yet.
All favors indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carries, nomination.
Present the name of Eddie Dave Piszynski.
Second.
Second, Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, on the question?
Yes.
Eddie Dave Piszynski is a state rep representing the city of Wilkes-Barre. I'd like to see an advisory position from the Ethics Commission before we go ahead with this appointment, to see if it's okay, since the advisory, the Luzerne Wyoming County Area Agent of the Agency receives state funding. I'd like to see an Ethics Commission advisory opinion on whether it's okay to appoint him before we move forward.
Well, my thoughts, and Ms. Greg is here and Ms. Procolmo, the Ethics Commission will not offer an opinion.
They offer an advisory opinion if the individual requests one.
The state does, I believe.
Are you talking about the state, or are you talking about our?
The state, the state, the state Ethics.
And I'll second that, Mr. Chair, just, there's no doubt my representation would be a lion on that board, he'd really benefit our area, but there's, it's a very legitimate question.
Well, I don't disagree with that, but I thought he was referring to the county ethics.
No, 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 no.
And they will not offer an opinion.
The state offers them, yeah.
He would have to request the opinion.
Correct.
In the past, we, the Office of Law, has sought them and they won't give them to us, so he will have to personally request that opinion.
So, should we have Mr. Piszynski do that? That would be the proper procedure?
If he's willing to do that, yes, but he would have to request that opinion.
Okay, now, we had a nomination and a second, Mr. Schnee, Mr. Kelleher.
I'll take back my nomination.
Okay, Mr. Kelleher?
That's all right.
So, we'll ask Mr. Piszynski to request that and then get that in writing so that we know that you're okay with that situation, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, there's only, there's only, there's two openings, and there's only one individual on here that can be appointed, because the other one's already appointed, so the position is still open.
Correct.
And I'm willing to keep it open until he gets his position, if he's willing to do it, so.
Fine.
I'll follow that.
Okay, so we remove the motion and a second to nominate Mr. Piszynski, so do we have a motion for Mr. Lewis?